Call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, in the boardroom at the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maris El Kiano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent? None. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by Ms. Nelda Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Jack Bailey. If you'd stand, please.
Our most gracious Father, we thank thee for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We pray that you would be with us, lead and guide and direct us as we discuss the business aspects for our school district. We thank you so much for the staff, teachers, administrators, everyone within our organization that works towards a better education for each and every one of our students. We pray that you would lead and guide and direct us, keep us ever in the center of thy will, and these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
So the pledge, the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. Do I have more that I need to read, Hope? Yeah. Should I read all of this, 551.074? Personnel.
How do we do on the pledge?
You did awesome. 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Only the personnel committee is meeting tonight, there's no need for a policy committee meeting. So we will be back to reconvene as close to 7:00 PM as we can be here. We're going to reconvene in open session. Certainly welcome all of you here this evening, and hopefully, any time during the course of the meeting, after you have been here for whatever recognition you're here for, you're welcome to leave, or you can stay for the entire meeting, we're happy to have you. But, we're gonna move on with first order, oh.
Special recognition.
Yeah, first order of business is special recognition. And we have Dr. Kirk Lewis, you're gonna introduce.
That's okay, good evening. First of all, we were taking a picture about our healthy challenge for the city of Pasadena, and we just finished stuffing our faces because our wonderful career in tech students from CTHS cooked for us tonight.[276.12][276.12](APPLAUSE). So we had culinary arts and our hospitality students, and they did an awesome job, so thank you, thank you, thank you. So let me take this opportunity, it feels a little weird to be introducing Dr. Kirk Lewis, our chairman of McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament. He retired just about the time we started videotaping board meetings, so do you wanna come up and sit here and present?
Absolutely not. Not now, not today, not ever.
He's here with several other members, including Cindy Palmer, our executive director of the Education Foundation, Christina Womack, who's our Education Foundation president, or she may not be here tonight.
She is.
Okay, wonderful. Oh my goodness, yes. And they have some special presentations, I'll just turn it over, how about that?
Thank you very much. Board members, Dr. Powell, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure even more to go home when I finish here this evening.[335.81][335.81](LAUGHTER). As much as I would like to stay, I have to wash my hair and do other things like that.
Get ready for work tomorrow.
Exactly. Thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight and use this venue for the check presentation that we make to the Education Foundation on behalf of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament. You may or may not know that this last year's tournament in November 2017 was the fifteenth tournament in our history, and we have, we began that tournament back in 2003 with Ben Metter and a steering committee that pulled that together in concert with the city of Pasadena and the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. The whole purpose of the tournament was to raise funds for PISD Education Foundation, that was the primary goal. A secondary goal of the tournament was to improve the image of Pasadena, the city of Pasadena, the business community in Pasadena, and to spread what we know to be a good thing around the state of Texas, as we invited teens from out of state and their parents, and people came with them. I think we've accomplished both of those goals quite well. Certainly, the first and primary goal has been a very huge success for us. In that inaugural year in 2003, the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament donated $10,000 to the Education Foundation. Since that time, we've had exponential growth for the first seven or eight years, and then we've sort of leveled off in the last few years as the tournament's become more mature. But in total, from that time until now, and this year, we have raised for Pasadena Education Foundation approximately $1.8 million, and for our partners in Deer Park, they've raised $338,000 total since they've been involved with us as well.[450.31][450.31](APPLAUSE). That's a total of $2.1 million that have been donated to education foundations in both our communities. And as we make this presentation tonight, I think it would be fitting to remind ourselves that this year, after the Harvey floods, obviously this community was hurting in a lot of ways, and we made a decision as a steering committee of the tournament to suspend our fundraising activities in August. We just didn't feel like it was appropriate for us to continue pushing real hard for funding at a time when businesses and individuals are trying to recover from some pretty damaging times for us. And so we did that, but as a tribute to this community, and it's certainly a tribute to our business community, they just didn't stop. Very few of them canceled on us, even though we were not being aggressive or active in recruiting them or retaining them, they would call and they would continue to give. And so we'll see, the results tonight is that we just didn't lose a lot of funding compared to last year to this year. And so we're very excited about that. But ultimately, our excitement is not so much what it does in the community as a whole, but in the end product, because we know that money goes to the education foundations in both these districts, that money then is turned around and given in terms of educational grants to our teachers, who put it to good use in teaching and instructing our kids. And for me, that was my whole reason for being involved when I was superintendent, and wanting to participate in this project with our community, and certainly as I continue now as the chair of the steering committee, it is what drives me to continue doing this year in and year out. I think it's very important for us to thank some folks, number one, our major sponsors and commitments. McDonald's, certainly, Ms. Kiano here, and her mother are instrumental in keeping McDonald's involved in this as our title sponsor, through their corporation and their donations, certainly the city of Pasadena and the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. We have about 400 volunteers across the community, through the community and the school district, who take tickets, sell t-shirts, act as team host, site facilitators, team captains, whatever we need, people are volunteering for that. And I would just like to take a moment, if you volunteer in any capacity for this tournament, would you please just raise your hand, because I know there are many out here that do that? We are most appreciative of the work that you guys do, you need to give yourselves a hand for that.[614.41][614.41](APPLAUSE). One of the things that our teams that visit seem to like real well for our tournament is the hospitality rooms that we have, the food that we provide them during the course of the day for the coaches and the referees and other folks that are working the program. Much of that food is provided by the Culinary Arts Kids at the various high schools, but a lot of it comes from our elementary, middle schools, intermediate schools, high schools, people who volunteer to bring things in, so I want to thank them as well. Real special thanks to the Pasadena ISD Athletic Department for the help that they provide in putting on the tournament through the use of the gyms, both centrally and at the individual campuses, and also some budget assistance from here, from time to time that they give us on an annual basis. I would like to thank Jack Bailey as a chair of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Golf Tournament that provides funding into our main tournament, that's organized every year in June, Jack does a good job pulling that together. All the people that work with him to make that happen contribute greatly. We have a steering committee that is very active and works real hard to make this work for us. If you're a member of the steering committee, would you please stand? We've got several of our wave if you're standing already. Thank you very much, they're here and they put in a lot of hours.[700.01][700.01](APPLAUSE). But certainly, and last but not least, I want to thank Pasadena ISD for its support of this program. I thank Dr. Powell for all that she does to continue to support it, and particularly you guys as board members. There's a lot that goes into this, and you allow your people to take part and participate during those days, and I deeply appreciate that, because without the volunteers that work for the school district that come and work then the tournament, particularly those two days when school is still in session, we wouldn't be able to do this, there's just no way. And so I deeply appreciate what you do, not just for the tournament, I know this is Board Recognition Month, so congratulations on all that, you just do a phenomenal job for this community, and the tournament certainly benefits from that. So, now it's my distinct privilege, as the chair of the steering committee of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament, to present a check to you in the amount of $152,553.69 that I personally gave.[764.73][764.73](LAUGHTER).[766.13][766.13](APPLAUSE). For a member of the steering committee, would you come down for the picture as well? Our Education Foundation Board, also. Here is it.
Hey, Aaron.
Good seeing you.
Hey Billy.
That's all right. And how are you?
Lot of gray hair.
That's just a few hundred dollars less than what we collected and gave last year, so we're very proud of that effort. And at this point, one of the other things that we do each year is we introduce our Volunteer of the Year, and we want to make that presentation tonight in front of these folks, and so I've asked Christine Womack, CEO of the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, who works with our volunteers and coordinates their efforts, I wanted her to make that presentation this evening.
Good evening, board members and community members. The basketball tournament, as Kirk said, is only as successful as the volunteers that make it happen, and as he mentioned, more than 400 volunteers make that happen over the course of the three-day tournament, on top of the fact that we have the steering committee that works countless hours all throughout the year. And those volunteers really represent what the tournament is all about, the coming together of both the city, the school district, the community, the businesses, all for one goal, and that's to benefit the classrooms and the children of Pasadena ISD in Deer Park. Each year, we honor one individual as our Volunteer of the Year for going above and beyond during the tournament. This year's recipient is Ms. Susan Frederick Hicks. She is a longtime volunteer for the tournament, we're thinking at least six years based on her t-shirt count, but the last three years she's worked under team captain Kyle Ford, and he said in his nomination that she is tireless and diligent, and has taken the worry out of his role as a team captain by ensuring that everything is always in its place, and by being the welcoming face for the players and guests in attendance at the Deer Park South Campus where she serves. Anything that needs to be done, she's always willing to offer the helping hand. Susan is a longtime educator and carries that passion into retirement as a volunteer for the tournament. If you visit the South Campus in Deer Park, she'll greet you with open arms and a warm smile, making you feel immediately at home. It is this friendliness that separates our tournament from all of those others. Please join me in thanking Susan for her dedication and commitment to making the tournament a first-class experience for all of our guests.[967.13][967.13](APPLAUSE).
That little piece, that little piece.
Well, that is awesome news, so thank you to all who are involved in the invitational tournaments, amazing each year. For those of you that are here for another special recognition, and those of you that may not know, January is Board Appreciation Month across Texas. So tonight, we join districts across our great state in honoring members of the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees, which we know is the very best school board in the state of Texas. Thank you. Can always count on Rhonda. Please join me in watching a short video that shows some of our memories from this So collectively, our board members in Pasadena ISD have accumulated over 120 years serving as trustees in our school district. Their longevity and commitment to our students, to our staff, and to our community is a cause for true celebration. We're truly blessed in our district to have board members who continue to care about the needs of all students in our district, and our board has consistently supported our innovative programs, which provide the best education for our diverse student population. The board's unwavering dedication to providing exceptional opportunities that cater to the whole student have led to a long list of accomplishments, and I'll read just a few. Raising the graduation rate in the past 10 years from 67.2% to over 90.9%, higher than the state average, we can clap for that one.[1231.33][1231.33](APPLAUSE). They've approved the expansion of the Connect Personalized Learning Program to benefit students at over 20 campuses, to which we are the largest provider in the nation. Our district is being named a state demonstration site for blended learning under the Raising Blended Learners Initiative. And Pasadena ISD, we just were informed, was ranked one of 28 Texas school districts to be named to the College Board's AP District Honor Roll for 2017, and that's the second time in the eight years of existence of that program. We've secured over $30 million just last year in high school scholarships for our seniors last year, and this board has helped earn multiple state and international business awards for financial transparency. Pasadena Memorial being named one of the best high schools in America, I'm sure there's some memorial folks out there that wanna give a shout out. Securing 25 grants this year totaling over $5 million for district programs, earning a Met Standard rating from the Texas Education Agency with a total of 124 distinctions this year, and being named, I know Lindell loved this, the best community for music education in America for 11 consecutive years. And last but not least, one of my favorite, passing a school bond and a TRE in the same darn school year.[1312.13][1312.13](APPLAUSE). So these are just some of the reasons and the ways the board continues to leave an imprint on our district. They've earned a true reputation for doing what's right for kids, and always serving on behalf of the children of Pasadena ISD, and their reward is the satisfaction of knowing that they provide the best education possible for all students. They don't get a paycheck, so if you didn't know that, I'm sharing that with you now. On behalf of the students, staff, and community members in Pasadena ISD, I personally wanna say a heartfelt thank you for helping our students soar to success, and please join me, a lot of you came just for this reason, in honoring our wonderful Pasadena ISD Board And thank you, everyone that came to see the check presentation and to honor our board, we appreciate your presence here tonight, and we'll continue with our program, but we could celebrate all night this wonderful school board. Well, I just have one thing to say. Being a board member has been very special to me, and it's because of all of you. Everyone involved in education has made my time on this school board very worthwhile. I love each and every one of you, and I thank you, and hope that you continue your service to our children. Anybody else wanna say anything?
You know, I'll say, the one thing we do real, real well is we hire superintendents.
Amen. Amen Kirk? I'm just kidding. Getting cocky for two years, aren't I? Just kidding. Okay, let's move on to public comments, and at this time is Mr. Steven Alvarez here. Mr. Alvarez, you have five minutes if you would like to speak with us, and Mr. Bailey will be your timekeeper, he'll tell you when you have one minute left.
Good evening, everybody and board members. I'm here to approach the board about an issue I thought was resolved years ago. I was looking for a home for my kids to grow up in a safe neighborhood, and Pasadena, I've been living here since 2002. Now I have little ones that are finally gonna benefit from all the tax dollars I've been giving to the school board, and they're gonna participate in the school program. So I bought a home across the street from Turner Elementary. When I went to see how the process is enrolling my kids in Turner Elementary, I find out that they don't have any bilingual programs, nor dual-language teaching at all. Given the fact that Pasadena is a highly populated Hispanic community, I found that to be shocking. So, now that I did my homework, I put my kids in a home right across the street from Turner Elementary. I live literally right across the street. Turner Elementary tells me I have to bus my kids elsewhere. So, I did my part as far as being a father, setting up a safe house, trying to make it as safe environment as possible, only to find out that I have to take the chance of my daughter getting on a bus, going somewhere, now it messes up my daily routine, and I have to be at certain locations, certain times to meet a bus, when all she has to do is walk across the street and go into Turner Elementary and participate, and the bilingual programs that Pasadena does offer, it's bilingual and dual education that they offer, but not at Turner Elementary. And I think it's being overlooked, would like the board member to look at the budget a lot closer and provide those services there. I know we can do it, I know Pasadena's been doing it, and if Pasadena board members and Pasadena School District get together, we can provide this program just like you're doing elsewhere. And that's my request for tonight, to have the board members, as well as Pasadena ISD, look into the budget and understand that these services must be provided, especially when a father does what he's supposed to do, and provide a safe home, and look for a school that'd be very beneficial for his kids, but only to find out that I have to bus them elsewhere. So I appreciate every board member and Pasadena ISD, if they take the time, give me a call, I'll be more than happy to sit down with y'all and see how we can get this implemented into Turner Elementary. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.[1614.33][1614.33](APPLAUSE). Well, I know that you've met with Dr. Folen, and we're looking at numbers, we've just recently pulled some numbers. The reason we have not offered is because we haven't had the student population at that campus, Mr. Palmer was principal there at one time, so we're gonna continue to look at that and contact you so that you know what our plans are for the future.
The numbers are there, it's just if you don't offer it and it's not announced, you're not gonna get people knocking on the door.
Well, unfortunately, I was the associate superintendent over that campus, and we had the program there, and we did not have the students come, so that's why it went away. But we're more than willing to look at those numbers, and I'll reach out to you as well when we do that analysis, Dr. Folen. I know you're already pulling that information together, and we'll discuss our future plans.
The community will help.
So we'll continue to look at it, board members, and provide feedback, absolutely. Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
I know that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? There was one item on page 159, and John, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up, it was our PISD Assessor and Collector's Report for the month of November. I just wanted to check on that date with you, page 159, was that November 16, or should that have been 17? Okay. Do you need to note that, Hope? I caught it. Ego eye, Mr. Roberts caught that, so we'll note that before y'all vote on that. Okay, that was it. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next, we're gonna move to the personnel section, which I'm sure many of you are interested in. Ms. Kiano is our chairman of that committee, so would you make that recommendation, please?
I sure will. I move that we approve addendums A through D in the administrative personnel section.
Motion has been made by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Ms. Kiano, would you introduce those?
This is the fun part. Do we have Amy Campos? Congratulations, I would like to introduce the new counselor and parent coordinator at Teague Elementary.
Yay![1781.01][1781.01](APPLAUSE).
Would you like to introduce your family?
Yes, I have my husband Joe Campos with me, and my kids Kara, Kayla, Caitlin, and Kylie, and now my parents.[1793.01][1793.01](LAUGHTER).
And some of your Teague family too.
And some of your Teague family, too.
And South Belk.
Lots of supporters.
Congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations. Wanda is the counselor and parent coordinator at South Shaver Elementary. Congratulations. Would you like to introduce your family and supporters with you?
I have my mother, my sister, my three siblings. My new principal, and I think my new family here.
Awesome. Naka Obialo? Did I say that correctly? Yay! Well, congratulations. She is a special education specialist. Congratulations. Do you have any family and supporters with you as well this evening?
Yes, and my star here, Lyric, and then also have our special education team years ago.
Wonderful. Jennifer Teichman. I'd like to introduce your new assistant principal at Beverly Hills Intermediate. Would you like to introduce your family?
I would. My husband Travis, my woman Dominique, my mother Brenda, sister Kristen, and my in-law Nancy and Dennis Teichman.
The entire board is very excited for all of you, and we look forward to all the wonderful things that you'll help us build in our district. Thank you.
Question. Ms. Teichman?
Uh-oh.
I have a question. Are you going to raise your son there a bear or a lion?
A bear.
Ouch. A what?
I was a bear. He was.
Where are you at now? Mr. Teichman, where are you at now?
I'm a Thompson.
Okay, a Thompson what?
Proud to be alive.
Okay, all right. Well, I just think it's a decision that y'all need to make. He's getting older. He's getting older. Y'all need to make a decision.
Well, the little one seems pretty determined.
He's so cute.
He's a what? Ah, there you go.
Oh. Smart boy.
He's cute.
Smart boy. Okay, we certainly say congratulations to each one of you. I know you'll do well in your new positions, and if any of you were here to see these personnel recommendations named, you're welcome to leave at this time, or like I said earlier, you certainly are welcome to stay. That's a way to clear the room.
Sure was a lot of people.
Yeah. Well, they came to see us, right? Yeah, that was nice.
And the check.
Yeah.
Usually we usually do the check presentation.
I know. I'm glad.
It's kind of weird.
Yeah.
Quick meeting over at a roster.
So we just...
Do it a little differently.
Okay. Certified Personnel is in your agenda, but that's for information only. I'm sorry. Consideration Possible Approval of a PK-12 Deaf Education Specialist Personnel Unit A O2/225 for the Purpose of Administering the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf, RDSPD. Is that right? RDSPD, in Pasadena ISD beginning March 1, 2018. So move. Motion by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Dr. Higginson, 60. How many students will we have? 60? Approximately 63.
63 is what we count today.
The number fluctuates.
And what facility?
Will you come up and name the... She's losing her voice, so bear with her, but name the campuses.
Yes, the campuses are South Belk. If I miss it up, Malillo, Beverly Hills, and Dobie.
Thank you.
She's been yelling at me.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now we'll move to the Educational section. Consideration Possible Approval of the District Improvement Plan for the 2017-18 school year. So move. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Darla Massey-Jones for all the work she does on this, as well as the campus plans, just making sure they're all put together, compliant with what the requirements are.
Is Darla here?
Yes, ma'am.
She sure is. Thank you, Darla. Stand up and let us give you a round of applause. Thank you so much. You did this well and so many other things. Thank you very much. So any discussion? Did I already call for discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration Possible Approval of the Campus Improvement Plans for the 2017-18 school year. This is campus. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, now is the public hearing of annual performance report, including the 2016-17 Texas Academic Performance Report. And who's going to do this?
Donna Summers.
Okay, good.
She used to be the one.
Board members, Dr. Powell, thanks for letting me share this information with you this evening, and also a personal thank you to the board for everything you do. I won't mention how many decades you've been doing it for me, but thank you as a student and a staff member. The annual performance report is a court requirement from the Texas Education Code. It tells us that we need to create a performance report and have a public hearing for it, and it also tells us what needs to be in it. Among those items, we need to clarify that we are an accredited school district. The second major component is the academic performance reports, which is the largest piece and also the most newly released, so we'll cover those now. Campus performance objectives. You just approved campus improvement plans for this year, but we have to go back and add a concise, just the objectives from last year's plan, so that's what you'll see. The student performance in post-secondary institutions and campus incidents. So all of that is the package of the performance report. What we'll cover in depth tonight is just the TAPR. The academic performance reports, each campus gets one, and the districts, they have four pieces, the same as they've had for several years, so nothing really has changed. Part one is STAR information. Part two is attendance and post-secondary readiness or student engagement. The third piece is a profile about the characteristics of our students and our staff, and the last is links to previous year's financial reports. That's everything you can find in them. Some things to keep in mind as we talk about STAR, and this has not changed from several years. I think I've said this now for probably four straight years. The special education area of assessment and accommodations continues to change, and those are not accommodations anymore. They're designated supports, so I got that where Debbie go. And even who can use them has changed, not just special education students. So there's still a lot changing. Comparing from year to year isn't always an apples-to-apples item. When we talk about our English language learners in this particular report, it usually speaks to not only students who are currently English language learners, but also those who have exited the program. So a lot of that data is merged data that's three years. Earlier in the year, I had talked to you about the areas where the district had met or exceeded state performance. This report also confirmed those, so it was grade-three reading, English and Spanish, and math Spanish; grade-four reading Spanish, math Spanish, writing English and Spanish; grade-seven math; grade-eight math, science, and social studies, as well as high school US History EOC, and we want to continue to celebrate those. In the report, you'll notice there... That's online, so I will get to that at the very end. There's rows of information, and the rows provide two years of data when you look at it, and those allow us to just see relative to the previous year how we had done. In the columns, it also gives us state and regional data. So any piece of data that's in the entire report, you could do the same thing that I've got on the slide here and show how the district, the state, and the region all compare. This particular slide is about the percent of students approaching grade level, and it's all grades combined and grouped by subjects. So we have reading, math, writing, science, and social studies, all very closely aligned in most cases, but you can see that reading still continues to be an area that we will focus on. In the columns of this particular report, we have student groups, and what I've done on this slide is a whole lot in once, just to give you an idea of the kind of information that the report provides. For reading, this is showing you our four race and ethnicities that are the largest in the district. So starting from left to right, African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian, that's the blue to yellow lines. Our economically disadvantaged percentage is the brighter blue, and ELLs is the green. Because we have a large economically disadvantaged population and an equal, fairly equal Hispanic population, those numbers are almost identical across the boards in all subject areas. The TAPR provides this kind of data, so state comparison, district comparison, region comparison, as well as all these student groups for every grade and every subject level. So there's plenty of information to dive into a little deeper. The second major piece of the TAPR report is attendance and post-secondary readiness. It has things such as attendance and dropout rate, as well as graduation and how students are doing in advanced classes and college entrance exams. So all of that is also there with relational data to district, state, region, and all student groups. A few items of interest here is the attendance rate, and this is over five years, so I grabbed a few past performance reports for five years of data, and this does speak to the reason we have attendance incentives going on right now, to get our attendance moving back in the right direction. We've already celebrated it multiple times this year and tonight, but I don't think we could say it enough that we have a graduation rate that is over the 90% mark of 90.9, and hopefully that'll just keep soaring. Another interesting item we have in the report, it's only been there for a few years, it is the percent of graduates who enroll in a Texas institution of higher education in any time during their first year following graduation. Right now, that average across the years is 58%, with a slight dip for the class of 2015, but given our high graduation rate for the class of 2016, I would expect that to get right back up to average. So we'll be watching that, but across the years, pretty consistently 58%. Along those lines, something I grabbed that was not in the TAPR report, but I thought you might be interested to know, is where are those students going to college? So that was the next slide I did here. This is from the Higher Education Coordinating Board, and it shows that 39% are going to San Jacinto College Central, 24 to San Jacinto College South, almost 90 to University of Houston, and then on down, I think I pulled the top 10. There are about, I think, I just lost my number, 70-something percent is San Jacinto College system or the University of Houston system. So that's where the majority of our students are going, who are enrolling in college the first year after graduation. The third piece of the report, student and staff information. The pie graph you see here is our race and ethnic breakdown, which has not changed much. 83% Hispanic, 8% African-American, 6% white, and 3% Asian. The report also shows that our economically disadvantaged percentage is almost 20% higher than the states, and that we have maintained an English language learner percent that's about a third of our population. The ones that are the closest to the state, we do have state comparisons in this report, those would be our Career and Tech, Gifted and Talented, and Special Education percentages. And I know you've heard a lot in the news about the special education cap and the issues with the state. We're well above that cap, and as you know, have always continued to do what is best for students, and I think this speaks to that. The last item I pulled from the TAPR report as a sample is the teachers by years of experience. Our largest population is 36%, with 1 to 5 years, and almost a tie here between 6 to 10 years and 11 to 20 years. There's just a little bit more of information about teachers and staff that you can find in the comprehensive report. Wanted to show everyone where these reports are and where they always are. We've had some help with the Communications Department. They've done a great job of getting it set up in an easy-to-find manner, which is the whole point of the annual performance report, is to put everything you heard over the course of last year and with the superintense evaluation all in one package, so that you and anybody from the community had easily have, sorry, easy access to it. If you go to the Pasadena homepage and you go over to the right, you'll see Required Postings, and underneath Required Postings is Accountability. In that Accountability section is everything we were required to post by the state, and it's the most current. So if something shows up before we meet again, it would always be the most current. If you want to see what is available, it'll always be there. The annual performance report tomorrow will go up, and that will be the 16-17 Annual Performance Report that has all the required components I just referenced. Then the TPRA is an online system. If you want to look just at campus reports, that's there, and then so are all of our ratings and all the other accountability items that are required by the state. And we update them as they come in, not as we're required to have public hearings on them. So anytime you want to, it's there. You have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Good job, as always. Thank you, Donna.
Appreciate it.
Due to the fact that this was a public hearing, Donna or Hope, did they have to open it up for public comments?
I don't know. Do you?
Maybe just to be safe? Okay. I don't think you do either. Does anyone want to speak?
Yeah, does anybody want to speak to this? Then we're legal.
I won't take that personally.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this?
So move. Second.
Well, it says on here it does.
Oh, that should be there.
Okay. I didn't think so, but anyway. Okay. Next is Consideration Possible Approval of Criminal Justice Grant Resolutions for the 2018-19 school year. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration Possible Approval of Sole Source Purchase for our annual renewal of the Chancery Student SMS System Maintenance with Power School. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
How much longer are we with this?
This would be a one-year overlap with the new product, so this should be our last year.
Okay.
Other questions?
And that means next school year would be our last year, just so you know, we're buying in advance.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration Possible Approval of Interlocal Agreement with Region 4 Education Services Center, Region ESC4 for the purchase of On Data Suite software. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration Possible Approval of Multiple Grant Awards from the Texas Education Agency, Oliver Foundation, and the Houston Texans and Texas Children's Hospital Place 60 program. So move.
Second.
Oh, boy. Okay, motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
Great job.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is, this is for information only, Build It With Kaboom Playground Grants. Do we need to... Does anyone need to speak to that, or...
No, I think the only thing we talked about in Cabinet is each time they do this, whether it's going to be at Ritchie or Gardens or South Houston Elementary, they always need volunteers, so when they get their dates planned, they'll publicize that, and we'll ask for volunteers to come out and be part. So it's just a great opportunity for our kids.
That's awesome. And also, the next is Consideration Possible Approval of Funding to Purchase New Uniforms for Dobie High School Band and Pasadena Memorial High School Band and Dance Programs.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration Possible Approval for Bondi Intermediate 8th Grade US History Students to Travel to Washington DC from June 1, 2018 through June 5, 2018.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Take care of my baby.
Take care of my baby.
Next is consideration and possible approval of career and technical, technical education students to participate in national competitions.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of J. Frank Dobie High School Junior ROTC Team Members to Travel to the Nationals, a National High School Drill Competition in Daytona Beach, Florida, on May 3rd through 5th, 2018.
So move.
Second. Motion has been made by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Any discussion?
Can we have them stand up?
How many get to travel?
How many are going to be traveling? Does it say in here?
Approximately 21 today.
Wonderful.
Oh, wow. That's awesome. Glad you all are here.
They all look sharp.
They do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make us proud.
Go get them.
Any discuss, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Send us pictures.
Yes.
Love pictures.
Pack your bag. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next time you wear a uniform, it may not be to Florida.
Oh, what is that supposed to be?
You just never know.
Who gets stationed anywhere? Who gets stationed anywhere?
That's right, you know that.
Consideration and possible approval of Thompson Intermediates travel to Keystone, Colorado, to attend the Keystone Science School, October 6th through 12th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Looks like you're going again.
Draw your attendance, your attention to student achievements on page 294 through 296. There's always wonderful things going on with our students. We have no policy update and review this evening, so let's move to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for November 2017.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments December 2017.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of comprehensive annual financial report for 2016-17 school year.
So move.
And we do have a presentation. John, did our presenter step out for a minute? Do you want to?
Not going.
Okay. We have Debbie Young from Weaver and Tidwell here, so she's not feeling well, but there is a PowerPoint presentation that you have. Hope, should we come back and see if she comes back to join us? Can we do that? Is that what you want to do? Okay, we'll try that.
Okay, so we're going to delay vote on this?
Can we? She wants to do a presentation, and she traveled here for that, but I think the heat got her.
It is warm in here.
Yeah, I know. So we'll give her a chance to cool down and come back and join us, and if she can't, we'll have John or Nina.
Let's move on, yeah, and then we'll come back to this one. Consideration and possible approval of investment brokers and dealers to engage in investment transactions with the district.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resolution concerning investment policy and investment strategy review.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Question. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
This calls for an investment officer, and it says the district should designate one or more officers, our employees, as the investment officer. So who is that? I know you're the CFO, and so that's one person, but who's the other?
This is in state law. The board has to designate investment officers. And other than myself, Nina Conway, and Anna Wyman are the two investment officers from the district.
And who, Nina who?
Nina Conway and Anna Wyman.
They have to go to training every two years?
We have to do, have so many hours of training every year. Every year. That's it.
Every year? Yeah, I got you. I understand.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes. 313 Winona Drive, 066-067-003-0014.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resolution of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Independent School District for Winter Storm, January 2018.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Well, board members, unfortunately, this school year, you are getting quite good at approving such resolutions, and I apologize. Who would have thought? But based on the work that our calendar committee did under the direction of Rhonda Palmer, we have enough minutes in our calendar to not make up the instructional time. And we've looked at that, the benefits and the trade-offs with giving up the staff development time. So you are the first to know, and then tomorrow we'll communicate to the staff and the parents that we will not make up those days because they're built in the calendar. So this resolution that John drew up will take care of the pay for employees on those two days. Correct? Okay.
Well, thank you, because I'm grilled every day at 2:35.
Okay, well, we wanted the board to know first, so now the rest of the community will get that information.
Okay. Any, any other discussion, other than Ms. Keano?
I understand. I have one of those at home, too.
It'll be a happy day tomorrow.
Yeah.
She keeps telling me why we don't need to. We'll make, we'll do fine, Mom.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 023, for the Dobie, New Dobie High School ninth-grade campus project.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of change order number 01 for the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School Edition Project.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the budget and design services agreement for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project included in the 2017 bond program.
So move.
Second.
Question.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Roberts.
The design fee for a long period of time has been, I thought, is seven. Now it's 7.3. Is that, is that the norm out there, or did someone get the project and it go up 3, 0.3? What's that all about?
Our typical percentage is 6.3.
Is 6.3?
Yes.
Then why are we going to 7.3?
7.3 is what we've established for phased construction, which this is probably going to involve for Red Bluff. Just the site constrictions, we've got, we're probably going to have to demo portions of the existing building for the new design.
Who is the architect or firm they got?
Create Architects.
They did a good job for us on the Pomeroy Phase construction, and we're building on the Red Bluff site, and so we're looking at something very similar there.
Why do they need the additional 0.3%?
It just involves...
I'm sorry?
It's 1%, right?
Yeah, 7, 7.3.
Well, yeah. It was 6.3, and they've gone to 7. My mistake.
Yeah.
So why do they need the additional?
It just involves a lot more design and phasing of the construction. It's a lot more complicated than just a standard design, because it has to be broken out into And that's pretty much...
Okay, I mean, I get the vote, so that's okay.
And Rogers here from Create as well.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I can make comments, but I don't need to.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, motion carries. And if the record would indicate that Mr. Roberts voted no. Construction update. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
We were excited to get Dobie Nine open this semester. It's a beautiful building, so you'll be seeing that as we go over to walk it and celebrate that.
Good, good. Moving to communications. Did we want to do the presentation now? Okay, yes.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry about that. Come on up.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Glad to be here tonight to present to you your annual financial report. I know many of you have the thick booklet in front of you, but I also have a small PowerPoint so that you won't have to flip through so many pages, that the district did such a great job of pulling together a very detailed report with lots of statistical information. But I know you've all had an opportunity to look at your annual audit report, but for, for the community that is watching this tonight, on page 32 of your comprehensive annual financial report is the government-wide financial statements. And revenues totaled $613 million. Expenses were $627 million. And you had a change in net position of $13 million decrease, which brought that net position from $355 million to $341 million. And that's once a year. The school districts keep their books on a modified accrual basis, and once a year they are required to prepare them on the full accrual consolidated, and so that's that measurement focus of net position. On page 37 is the general fund, which accounts for the general operations of the district, had total revenues of $470 million. And of that, $141 million was local revenues, state revenues $322 million. Expenditures totaled $477 million, which was primarily instruction and instructional-related services of $307 million. Other finances and sources and uses were $309,000, which brought over a change in fund balance of $7 million decrease, which brought fund balance from $102 million to $95 million. On the next page is just the general fund highlights. Your unassigned fund balance is 13% of your annual expenditures. The general administration ratio of the district is 2.32%, which is below the state average of 3.4%. So that's very good. On page 37 of your CAFER is the debt service fund, which accounts for the collection of property taxes for the payment of the general obligation bonds. And the district took in $52 million, which was $35 million in local revenues, which is primarily property taxes. Your state money, $17 million. Expenditures were $46 million, principal and interest in those debt service charges, for other financing sources and uses of $180,000, and a net change in fund balance of $6.4 million increase, which brought it from $45 million to $51 million. On page 38 is the capital projects fund, which accounts for the proceeds of bond issue, bond issue money as, and for the construction of the projects as outlined in that bond issue. Had revenues of $1 million, expenditures of $95 million, and a decrease of $94 million overall, which brought fund balance from $140 million to $45 million. On page 38 is all the non-major funds. And those are your special revenue funds, like Title I, Special Ed, Food Service, all consolidated together. Had total revenues of $82 million, expenditures of $81 million, and excess of $1.6 million, which brought fund balance from $10.5 to $12.1. And then on page 160 of the CAFER, it's one of the most important things TEA looks at, is what is your summary of auditor's results? And the opinion on the basic financial statements is the first thing they look at. It's a clean, unqualified, unmodified opinion, which means that the assets and liabilities and revenues expenditures are all fairly stated in accordance with GAAP. It's the highest level of assurance that can be given. The audit was performed in accordance with auditing standards in the United States of America, and also government auditing standards. And there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. On page 160 is the opinion on the major programs. This year, we tested the Title I and Special Ed, which were our major programs. Also, you received a clean, unmodified opinion with no material weaknesses or significant My special thanks to John, Nina, Bethany, and Anna. We come at an interim year-end, and we ask for a lot of things, and they're always very professional and provide us the data, much of it ahead of time. And we just appreciate all their professionalism and courteousness, and, and they were the big parts of putting this report together.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Certainly hope you're getting feeling better. Anybody have any questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It was a motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Bailey.[1726.54]